On three, two, one. And we are going live.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for joining us. We are at the Creston Planning Commission meeting. Uh, today is March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is five oh four P M. And so far, it looks like we have Jessica Lancher Chair, uh, present. Uh, David Christopher, Ed Gunderson, Seth Clark, and Tammy Sushak. Welcome, everybody, and thanks for joining us. So, um, note that we have amended minutes tonight. It sounds like they, um, they were sent out, you said about a half hour ago, right in there. So have you guys had a chance to review the amended minutes?
Yeah, I did look at them.
I'll give you a highlight of what I caught. I was just reviewing them because, uh, they were minutes from January of this year. And I caught a couple errors in the public hearing script component of them, of the applicable criteria. And, uh, the time, timestamps of the closure of the meeting, uh, closure of the hearing and the closure of the meeting, I think, were almost transposed. So just note that those, we, we don't want to be closing the hearing after we close the meeting.
Right.
So there's that. Thank you for, for your patience on that.
All right.
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of approving the amended minutes for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one? It looks like we have all hands up, Maddie.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, and then we have a few audience members. So, um, let's see. It looks like we have Richard Bass. And, let's see, um, you guys are from Arbor South. Up here, perf- okay, awesome. Welcome. Thank you, everybody. Do we have anyone on YouTube yet?
I see one viewer.
One viewer. Well, welcome viewer. All right, um, do we have any Commissioner comments tonight?
Nothing.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering, wondering if Ed has any input into the bike bicycle, um, transportation plan stuff. Did you do that?
Yeah, I did. It's, um, I, it's, I'm optimistic. I'm, I'm happy to see this happening. Yeah. I hope we can get funding for some of these things. I guess we talked about a lot of things that are keeping people off of bicycles. I mean, it was clear from the studies they've done and from the input that there's a lot of people that would like to use bicycles, but they're not using bicycles because it's, they don't feel safe. Simply don't feel safe. And so there was a lot of constructive input. And I, I, I've, uh, since the meeting, I've been on the, the website and I made suggestions. Um, and I saw that there were quite a few other people that have been online and have also made suggestions to the county and made their opinion know, known. Well, it, uh, it looks good.
Yeah, just wondering. Yeah.
For everyone else's, um, edification, that was for the Lane County Bicycle Master Plan. Um, and that public comment period is open until the twenty-second. So if you haven't had a chance to look at it or take a minute to identify some of, uh, your the most desired bike routes and/or places that you've seen bicyclists that you've been concerned as a motorist. You know, that, they're kind of looking for a whole spectrum of perspectives on that. So if you have a moment, please don't hesitate to engage in their process.
All right, and then, uh, I would like to remind you guys to make sure and do your S E I filing as well. Um, I don't know if you guys have all done that. If it should be in your, um, email from the city. And then you have a password and stuff to get into it. So Maddie, I believe we can get ahold of the tech people if we need help with any of that stuff.
Yes, uh, Step Up I T is our I T provider. If you haven't made good friends with them, they're very friendly and they would be happy to help you with password recovery and whatever else it takes to get you logged into the city email. In order to get your, uh, you, you may have to use a unique link that they send you.
Yeah, I did, I did mine on Monday and I found that they had me change my password last year. So I tried that password twice. It didn't work. And so I went back to last year's password and it worked. So, don't give up on last year's password. It may still be in there.
The irony.
All right, is there anything else? Commissioner comments?
Nothing.
Okay. We're gonna move on then to new business. Well, all right, so tonight we are hearing, we've got a hearing. It's gonna be awesome. Public hearing. Um, the Planning Commission will be making a quasi judicial decision. On case number S R dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one. A site design review request initiated by Arbor South Architecture on behalf of Richard and Connie Bass. Owners to construct five apartment buildings consisting of two-bedroom units on tax lots one-two-one-zero-zero and one-two-zero-zero-zero at apartment, excuse me, at assessor's map, one-nine dash zero-three dash one-four dash three-two. The proposed development will create twenty-one total units. The property is owned high de- high-density residential and is currently vacant. The proposal will be reviewed subject to the following sections of the Creston Development Code. Section two-point-two Residential Land Use Districts, Article Three Community Design Standards, Section four-point-one point four-zero-zero Type Three Quasi Judi- Judicial Review, and Section four-point-two Site Design Review. All right. Are you ready to get this started? Okay. Okay, um, let's see, so. Uh, testimony, arguments, and evidence presented must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes applies to the decision. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the Planning Commission and parties' opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. All right, the public hearing on S R dash twenty twenty-one dash zero-one, a site design review application for the proposed Holbrook Apartments is now open, is five eleven. Okay, impartiality. Uh, do any commissioners have an ex parte contact, visited the site, actual or potential conflict of interest or bias to declare? No? Okay, all no's from everybody. All right, Maddie, would you please present the staff report?
Absolutely, Chair. Thank you, um, thank you Arbor South, uh, and, uh, Richard and Connie Bass for joining us this evening. Uh, it's always nice to see applicants join us for the public hearing process. There's, there's opportunity for, um, just to, to give everyone an overview. There's an opportunity for folks to, um, to respond or to provide additional presentation materials after I finish the staff report, um, which is primarily what you've seen reviewed in the material that was distributed to the commissioners. Also, I'd note that there are two folks that have joined us on YouTube, um, both of whom commented on the application. So you'll see their written comment. There was one written comment received, uh, on the fifteenth. So two days ago, that did not make your packet materials. And that's from Mackenzie Mazurek. Pardon the, um, terrible pronunciation that I've just done of that person's name. Um, I think he'll, he'll forgive me, but he is also joining us, uh, visa, via, uh, YouTube. And both of them had comments that were very consistent with one another around, uh, screening and privacy. So I'll, I'll get to that when we get to, uh, public comment. But, uh, please rest assured that if you do have a concern or a question, go ahead and use that raise your hand function or wave at the camera or something and we'll, we'll make sure that Chair recognizes you and gives you an opportunity to speak. Thanks again, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, it's my pleasure to, uh, introduce the Planning Commission to our applicant Arbor South and Richard and Connie Bass. Um, we, you all have met before, or at least Richard and Connie have tangentially been associated with the Planning Commission as they went through their zoning change uh, back in September of this year, of twenty twenty. Uh, as you know, and as the Chair has mentioned, uh, the proposal, uh, for twenty-one units of residential use on a site that's been, been addressed as four-eleven Holbrook Lane in the past. Um, that n- number could stay, but the tax lot is twelve hundred, um, or twelve thousand rather, and, and one-two-one-zero-zero are both, uh, properties that we have seen before, before the Planning Commission in that zone change. Uh, just for everyone's recollection, that zone change, uh, upzoned the property from low-density residential to higher-density residential. And the standards, as you'll see in the findings of fact, that are included in your packet, uh, range from twelve units to twenty-four units in that high-density residential zone. Uh, the applicant proposes to build twenty-one units. You'll see that in their application materials that the twenty-one units have, uh, met many of the, uh, design standards, if not all of them, with a few minor exceptions that I think we can work out as the application materials go through our construction design review. Just to highlight, uh, you'll see in their materials, and I've got a series of measurements in case there are any questions. But you'll see that these five buildings are arranged on the one acre of land on Holbrook Lane. Um, more or less around the edges of the site with, uh, a parking lot to access all the facilities and a detention facility that is also doubling as some common space in the center, uh, or to the north, area northeast corner of the property. From a, a review perspective, there are very few items that the applicant did not meet, and I appreciate that. Uh, and just another thank you to the applicants for their diligence in meeting with staff and working through some of the criteria ahead of their application. So that made the review fairly straightforward. I'll go through the, the requirements in just a moment, but I'd also first like to, uh, call out a couple errors um, on my own behalf, and you'll have to extend me a little grace by any commissioners. Uh, there were some lingering comment items that were left from a previous review that I would like to make sure are struck from this version so that we don't have any confusion or questions. Um, if you'll follow me to the thirty, page thirty-two, which is in the, uh, the, the punchline section, section F, um, which typically describes all of the criteria that were not met or conditions of approval. Uh, I'd like for you to strike item H out of section three. This refers to a sidewalk on Oregon Avenue and North Mill Street. And I will confess embarrassingly that that is not part of this project. Thank you for your grace on that. And then secondly, under number four, uh, you'll also please strike the, uh, the line that says best practices, anything after best practices typical of a construction project in an area of high seasonal groundwater. We do not know this site to have s- high seasonal groundwater. So thank you for making those changes. From there, I will, uh, and I'll provide the Chair with a, an amended copy so that it's clear which version you're signing and that those amendments have been made. Two items to, to, uh, to discuss of particular interest. One is that, um, and, and we can go through this and kind of work through all of the questions that commissioners may have or any of the concerns that you may want to express based on some of the public comments. Um, but essentially, the only challenges that we've, uh, that we've seen or that staff re- review turned up in the application of the standards were, one, that the, the front or the building A, which will face Holbrook Lane. Um, and perhaps this is an error of my own measurements, among other things. It could be just how the section drawing was, was com- compiled. Um, but it appeared that there were approximately two feet, and this is a very minor detail, two feet of, uh, additional ground level windows, doors, or openings. We just have to make sure that the front that faces Holbrook Lane has an adequate n- amount of openings. And that's a measurement of linear feet. And that's a, a standard that applies to all buildings in all residential areas. So single-family homes all the way up to apartments. I can, I'm happy to work with the applicant, but I, I do want to make sure that that, uh, criterion is met. Um, and that can certainly be revised in some red lines or, or perhaps I can be corrected in my measurements. Um, the second was something that came up in, in response to, uh, the reply from Danny Soulsby, our fire marshal, in item number two. Um, please, please add to section B there, uh, that includes indicators or identifiers that identify this material called grass crete. Uh, Danny, our fire marshal, and this may be a funny thing with firefighters and developers, that there are new materials coming out in development that firefighters are not as familiar with. This material is called grass crete. Maybe the applicant can speak to it in their, in their rejoinder comment. Um, but uh, just as a, a point of humor, the firefighters don't know that it's not grass. And so they're afraid to drive on it. And the whole point of including it is so that a fire truck can drive on it to make their turning radius complete. Um, and in fact, they're hesitant to use it because it looks like a lawn. So it's achieving its goal, um, but we may need to put up some kind of signage or an indicator, even on, just on the curbing of that area that says, please drive here to a fire truck. Um, he's found in Cottage Grove that this is a challenge. He insists and reminds his folks that, that are cer- you know, in the, in the trucks. Um, the fire marshal, in fact, doesn't typically ride along as often with the folks that are, are first responders. Um, but he reminds them that the grass crete exists, but they still, to this point, have not, um, believed him, or there's not a lot of visual indicator that helps them out. So please add that to, to number two. Uh, and then finally, um, I'll keep my staff report fairly short and the review of the, of the findings pretty succinct because most of the criteria were met. But one of the items that I'd like to highlight, knowing that we have, uh, both of our public comment individuals joining us tonight on YouTube. The, um, the concerns that were expressed about developing a higher-density use next to other areas that are zoned lower-density uses. Uh, I think the primary concern here is, is privacy and/or sound barriers or sound mitigation during construction. You'll understand that the neighborhood there is fairly well-established and there are folks that will be impacted by the construction process. And I trust that, uh, the development team will take the steps necessary to, uh, work with the neighbors and, uh, meet some of their expressions of concern. Um, Selena Chang, who is a resident of F Street, you'll see her comment included in the staff report. She's requested that, um, we highlight or emphasize privacy trees and, and landscaping towards the west side of the development. Uh, that's included in the landscaping plan, I would add. Um, laurel bushes, I'm not sure about the size or the scale of those laurel bushes when they're installed, but I know as someone who has some old laurel bushes on my own property that they get quite large and you may not be able to control them. And, and they do provide quite a bit of privacy when they reach maturity. Um, so that's ju- something to highlight. Uh, there are a number of ways to meet that kind of screening request. And we believe, staff believes that, that the applicant is, is more than, uh, able to do that through the proposal that they've submitted to the city. Uh, the second is an, an, uh, a resident that lives on Evelyn Avenue. His name is Mackenzie Ma- Mazurek. And Mackenzie has written into the city asking or requesting, um, a similar type of privacy screening at the front, uh, or at, at, at the street because his property adjoins the property just directly south. There are a few ways to achieve the request that, that, um, Mackenzie is requesting. I will mention, though, that we do have some concerns. The city has some requirements about front setbacks and the ability to, uh, extend fences or landscaping. I guess landscaping to a lesser degree, but mostly fences, um, in that front setback. We don't a- allow folks to build, uh, fences taller than four feet in the front setback typically. I don't think that that is likely to satisfy the request, um, as it's presented. And I can, I can read it, uh, to you if, if folks are interested. But essentially, he said, I'd like for a four-foot sound barrier to be as erected and then a fence on top of that as, as high as the city's requirements will allow. And unfortunately, I think we're a little limited at the city, um, to be able to allow much obstruction or, or buffering in that area. But I would note that the applicant has included a series of tree plantings along Hu- Holbrook Lane. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that their vegetation and laurel screening does extend also along the southern border of the property. And I see Arbor South nodding, nodding their heads. Um, so my hope is that by providing this vegetation and landscaping that we can mitigate some of those, um, concerns about the sizing and the massing of the buildings uh, where they've been located. Um, from there, uh, so to that end, um, it's recommended. And I, I wouldn't, I would also suggest an amendment to the, uh, findings of fact that, um, that the applicant consider installing those fences and, and vegetation as soon as it's feasible, um, in their construction process, just out of courtesy to the neighborhood, um, in an effort to mitigate some of the impact of the construction and, uh, enhance some of the screening opportunities as their, their project proceeds. Beyond that, um, you'll see that we've got, uh, a really, in, in my opinion, a very attractive set of five buildings that will all have two, uh, two-bedroom units in them. Uh, a walkway system that connects all of those buildings to both the street and to the open space provided. Um, one of the only criteria that, uh, that I was interested in about the open space um, was the inclusion of some benches. And, and I noticed that the landscaping achieves a lot of the shading requirements that, uh, that you all made some changes to when we did the housing code revision uh, back in, let's see, that would have been December, no, March of twenty twenty. So I was happy to see those vegetation, uh, efforts made. And they've got more than enough parking. Um, each of the units will be, um, each of the buildings will have, uh, each of these units are like an upstairs-downstairs style. So none of them will be single units on the top or simply, simply on the bottom. It's my understanding that they're all two bedrooms with a, a kind of like a living room kitchen in the, in the ground floor. We're lucky, or the applicant is quite lucky because the frontage improvements are completed along Holbrook. Um, and I would simply add from a, from a policy perspective that this project is, um, very much in keeping with the changes that the Planning Commission recommended and the council made back in December of twenty nineteen and then su- subsequently in March of twenty twenty. Um, and are commensurate with a high-density zoned development. So thanks to, uh, I'll turn it over now to questions, uh, for me. And then after that, I'll, I'll invite, or Chair will invite, uh, the applicant to present any material that they'd like to highlight.
Maddie, I would like to just let you know real quick, uh, Pat's having issues getting on. So he's trying to call, but he can't get on. So I just wanted to let you know that real quick. Um, all right, so do any commissioners have questions for Maddie at this point?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that, uh, hallelujah, high density. And this, this plan looks really, really good. And only other question would be, how tall is a five-gallon laurel for a start? Uh, and yes, they do grow to be a nice sound and barrier, privacy barrier.
I bet a five-gallon laurel is about, I bet it's about three inches or more in diameter, the trunk of it. And, um, and, uh, I think that what you'll find is that the, um, height of a five-gallon version of that may be probably three or four feet to start.
Right, and that's gonna be, yeah, that'll be behind a six-foot, six-foot fence. Is that what I'm seeing here? You've also got a fence around the perimeter.
I believe that's true, and I would, I would redirect that to the applicant. Um, in terms of where their fencing is and where it's proposed, I unfortunately, that'll be one of the items. I do see wood fence right there at the south side of the property. And I would, uh, I would say if you, Planning Commission wish to, um, wish to entertain the comments or the, the requests by the folks on Evelyn, um, to allow a taller fence in that location. I think that we can, I think there's, there's a way to do that if you want to highlight that. Cause I, I'm seeing a, a comment on the YouTube channel, and I apologize for the kind of back and forth haphazardness of, of relaying comments from YouTube. But, um, Mackenzie has joined us and he re- is requi- clarifying that his fence request is for the south side of the property, not Holbrook Lane, and he wants to make sure that that's emphasized.
All right, um, do, okay, so let's see, let's move on to, um, testimony. Um, so we wish to hear from everyone who's interested in the proposal. Um, please remember to state your name. So do we have any applicants that want to comment? Yes, okay, absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, um, comment or just go ahead and make our presentation. Okay, um, yeah, basically, we are in agreement with staff report and the conditions. So we don't have any problems with those. Uh, just to reiterate, uh, on the windows, we'll work with city staff to, uh, get that uh, along Holbrook, Holbrook Lane, get an adequate amount of windows area, area there. We'll work with the fire department on some way to identify the grass creep, uh, whether it's a sign that says, please drive on me, or, or, or a red curb or something there that they, uh, know that, uh, just to make sure that they know that they are able to drive on that if they need to. Um, and then Maddie, you mentioned the benches. Uh, uh, we do have benches around, uh, store water. And they just get labeled on the plan, so there are some benches along that path that circles around that. So, uh, we did that. Uh, and then regarding the screening, um, I think the laurel hedge, uh, which we are showing on the west and the south will be, uh, adequate for five-year-old screen. Uh, there's an existing six-foot fence on both the west and south sides of the property. And, uh, we happy and willing to, uh, repair it if it needs repairing in any areas uh, and that, so that it is, uh, brought up to a, an adequate screen. Um, I'm a little hesitant to go for an idea of an eight-foot fence because I think the hedge would really take care of the screening on that. You are right, Maddie, the hedge, laurel hedges start out at about three or four feet high on a five-gallon hedge. And they grow quickly, so, um, we're open to that. We're really not open to planting those, uh, before construction, though, because they'll just get pretty much destroyed, I think, during the construction. So, um, I think, um, you know, the six-foot fence will probably have to do during construction, but then we'll get those, uh, the hedges planted right away, uh, after that. Um, other than that, I don't really have any. uh, after that. Um, other than that, I don't really have any, uh, anything else to present, so uh, like I said, we're, uh, we're fine with the conditions that the city has placed on this and unless Richard and Connie have anything they want to add, I think that's uh, pretty much it.
No comment from Richard and Connie.
Just as a quick rejoinder, um, to, to share a little bit more about the the, the next steps in the process, just for the planning commission's edification. Um, we had, we're working with our, uh, with West Tech Engineering and they're a, they're, we've, we've recently, within the last year um, changed the representative who serves the city of Crestwell as our city engineer. And we've, um, Steve Ward is a, a principal at that firm. So we're, we're kind of taking a slightly different approach than you may have seen in past staff reports. Uh, planning commissioners, you may notice that the, the level of detail is a little different. Um, there were concerns in, in the past about providing too much detail uh, in the, the initial review, such that it became difficult or, or maybe too rigid in the dis- construction design review process for pla- for the public work side of, of the review to be successful. So we're taking a slightly uh, lighter touch on utilities uh, at the onset of a project, so that if there are changes that need to be made vis a vis utilities, they're not hemmed in by the planning decision. Um, so you'll note that there are some, there are some items that are not, not terrible, but they're a little bit complex. Um, we do have one item of note, you read in the staff report, that there's a major water transmission line that runs through the rear of this property, the west side, west quarter quadrant of this, of the site. And uh, that's the water transmission that serves the whole city from the water tanks. Uh, and it is scheduled for retirement. Uh, when we have the capacity and the funding to be able to do a series of relocation projects. But in the interim, I just highlight that the, the staff will be working with the applicant to uh, install a, a stop valve on Evelyn Street, so upstream from the project. So that we don't risk the uh, draining of the tanks. And when there's a, a better day or time for us all tell stories, I will tell you a funny story about the last time that the tanks were drained. Um, but just as a highlight, uh, they have water and sewer at the road. Um, and there are more than adequate capacities to serve the development. Um, but they will be up, upgrading or updating some of the connections to that service and following the public design standards as as outlined, uh, and, and sort of generally stated, um, in, in the findings of fact. Thanks for letting me add that. I think we may have lost our chair.
Yeah, I think she uh, went off.
And I think we gained Patrick, maybe we traded a chair for a vice chair. Patrick, are you there?
I am, I finally made it on.
Oh, thank you, sorry for uh, the, the challenges that you may have had. Um, Patrick, we're just finished wrapping up, the applicant was able to share a little bit uh, about their um, situation, Jessica's rejoining us, Jessica, welcome back.
There's Jessica.
And uh, we are just at the conclusion, I don't think you missed anything Jessica, I think we just, I just explained some of the utility work.
Yes, I was, I was listening, but I, I couldn't see anything, things, you know, computers.
Challenging.
That one was not working, so we're on a new one, so.
We're good.
I apologize.
Okay, so, so you can pick up right where you left off then?
Yes. Okay, so do any commissioners have any questions for the applicants? No? Okay. Um, then um, Maddie, do we have any other comments from audience members or any questions?
Only that uh, Mackenzie, my apologies, Mackenzie is a female. And I've made that error already at least three times in my explanation, um, so apologies there. Uh, but she wa- just wants to make sure that um, that we follow up on making sure that the privacy screening is installed and, and I'm assuring both her and uh, Selena Chang on F Street that I will check in with them and it'll be part of the decision document for the planning decision.
Okay. Sounds good, um, okay. Well, I guess we will go ahead and uh, close the hearing then, uh, five thirty-nine. And we will move on to deliberation, so in deliberation, uh, just since it's a little bit harder on this platform, uh, this will not be open to public comment from the applicants, um, or the uh, public who we have on YouTube, so this will just be within the planning commission um, and Maddie, so, alright guys, let's go ahead and deliberate and see what we want to do here. What do you guys think?
Well, I, I, like I said, I, I'm thinking it's, it's an excellent proposal and I'm really happy to see high density, um, and if it, yeah, I give it a thumbs up.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments about it?
I think it looks good, I, I like I, I uh, emphasize with the people that are worried about um, privacy while they're doing this. Uh, I don't know if they're gonna be happy with it, just the laurels being there, I, I don't know. I, I hope, I hope they can be kept happy through the process, I mean, I could see it being easy enough to, to put up a temporary uh, uh, rain screen type shade screen along there. Probably keep them happy and probably not very, be very costly, but I just hope we can keep the uh, adjacent property owners happy through this.
There's, there's always that construction period where things don't look good and it's kind of inconvenient, but uh, once it's all said and done, you know, you just gotta look at it as, okay, when it's done, it's gonna look like this. And uh, that's gonna be, it's like what we're in right now, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be good.
Well, I think the choice of English laurel was a good one, it starts out about three feet and uh, it grows two, two feet a year. It, it'll grow quickly, um, it'll fill in, it's not like this sparse thing that has gaps in it. Um, so I actually, in my opinion, I like the English laurel idea. Uh, I like that it's not right up against the buildings. I like the, the parking that they've planned out uh, as well in the raised per- uh, walkway, I think they, they really thought this out, so I, I like the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think uh, during construction is gonna be, it's impossible to completely, you know, keep that noise away from the neighbors and um, none of us live there, and so it's kind of hard to speak to that, but I, you know, I'm living on a property where a house is being built and it absolutely sucks. And I think that's exactly what you tell yourself is gonna be better when it's done, so um, yeah, I think you know, looking at the plans, not only the um, laurels, but there's a lot of other larger you know, trees as well, um, that will be up around the edges and so I, I think that honestly, I was really impressed with the amount of shrubbery and trees and landscaping that they had planned out, um, because being married to a tree trimmer, all I see is a lot of maintenance, but I think it looks really nice, I think it's gonna um, over time really grow into itself and I think those hedges are gonna, you know, really create a good barrier. It won't be absolutely right away, but it will definitely get there over time, so. Yeah, I also like it and I'm excited to see it, so. Alright.
Um, my one question that I had was in, cause I came in late, I didn't, um, I don't think I caught that portion of it. I know that um, I might be in the wrong spot to be asking this, but about that, uh, what was it Danny Solbsy said about the grass creep? What was the, was there an answer on that Maddie, that was ever come up on?
Yeah, I, I think we're working through what the, what the markings might look like, but essentially, we'll, we'll have to mark the area that looks and feels like, or, or is made out of grass creeds, so that folks who are driving the trucks know that they can drive right on it and not have to worry about it. Um, but Patrick, good, good point in bringing that up. Um, it's, you know, it's all, it's, it's a nice way to hide the, the massing of a turni- of the, of the turning radius requirements of the, the hammerhead that's typically required for a turnaround. Um, it's just tricky when you hide it too much. So much so that they can't even use it, um, or don't use it. So we'll, we'll work through that, Danny actually has been working with uh, with the cities of Crestwell and Cottage Grove within the South Lane service area and he's developing a set of standard signage and markings to help uh, both the public and the folks who work on the fire crews identify where some of these facilities are, so. Well, hopefully as we start seeing a little bit more of Danny's work implemented in different projects, you'll start to see a standardization of curbing, colored a certain color, usually red. Uh, some signage that says no stopping fire lane, very s- common sight, but uh, particularly when we see something that's integrated into a landscape like this grass creep material, there will be some kind of visual indicator that helps the, the first responders be, be aware of its presence and, and ability to use it.
Alright, thank you Maddie, um, are we ready to make a motion? Anyone? Dave, you wanna do it?
I, I had it up here on my iPhone and because it was already there. And then I, yeah, it timed out on me, of course, there we go. Uh, let's see, I moved at the city that the Crestwell Planning Commission approves with conditions. The site design review requests SR dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one, Holbrook Apartments as described in the final order and adopt the findings of facts as presented. Were they amended at all? Okay, as amended, at this meeting, planning commission authorized with the chair to sign the final order.
I second that. Alright, um, who all's in favor of the motion? Unanimous Maddie. Alright.
Thank you commissioners.
And thank you Arbor South.
Thank you for having good material packet to us.
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you for uh, your support, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll uh, exit the meeting, girls have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you everyone and um, I'll, if you have questions or if you have any comments or concerns about, you know, some of the details and what you've seen in the materials, please don't hesitate to contact me, you know, how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Alright. So uh, it looks like next is the staff development summary.
One moment, I'm just responding to a quick question about uh, kids playing and cars and loud music in and out of the driveway of the development. I'm just mentioning that many of those issues are covered by the municipal code standards and can be addressed through complaints. Um, thank you commissioners for your uh, review of the materials of the public hearing, it was exciting, it's exciting to see a, a project come to fruition of something that um, you all took steps to encourage and, and make available as an opportunity, so. Um, as I stated to a, a planning commissioner, just as a, a, as a way of transitioning from that hearing to a staff development summary, um, a planning commissioner asked whether a, a Lake County planning commissioner in a recent co-adoption hearing at the planning commission level for them will be moving through co-adoption of those goal ten and goal seven uh, comprehensive plan amendments that you all recommended and were adopted in March and April of last year. Uh, and one of the commissioners made a comment that uh, he lives in the Crestwell area, has a Crestwell address, but lives outside of town. And in fact, was um, surprised to see Crestwell encouraging multifamily housing development. And to him, I responded and said, well, commissioner, we have an application coming before us next Thursday uh, for twenty-one units on one acre of land. And I perceived that to mean that's a call, the planning commission called and said we'd love to see these types of developments in our community and this is the answer. So thank you for your work on uh, reading the tea leaves, as it were, of, of our community and our priorities and helping Crestwell provide some housing choices uh, that, that may have not been available before. Um, as far as the development summary, I've got a couple items. Um, you may have seen a recent redevelopment of a parcel on Highway ninety-nine south. Uh, that's a, a parcel that has been used for many years as a um, rental shop kind of building and it recently had a new roof put on it and painted sort of like a burnt orange. Um, F Street and Highway ninety-nine. Um, it's my understanding that that owner, Jim Brick, may come to the planning commission as soon as next month, but uh, per- depending on the completeness process and, and his application materials, uh, he will be coming forward with a site design review to expand that use south to make uh, more units for a, an increasing or burgeoning demand for commercial industrial space uh, along Highway ninety-nine south. And that lot was tricky because uh, it was lacking services, water and sewer. And to serve it would require extension of a main line in Highway ninety-nine. And as you may have read in the Crestwell Chronicle today, my comments about development along Highway ninety-nine north or south uh, that sometimes this can be challenging for the development community to take on as a, a component of what could already be a large project for them. Um, and in fact, Jim owning that lot on F Street will help him because he'll be able to utilize his existing utility connections uh, to serve a new development, hopefully of a similar success level and, in my opinion, a very tasteful way to do uh, commercial industrial space. And I think the, the secret or the magic, um, the magic to, to that project may be uh, some relationship that the city is continuing to build with Douglas Fastnet. Um, that's a highlight in my uh, development summary tonight. Uh, Douglas Fastnet has been helping the city expand access to fiber. Oh, looks like Patrick got kicked out, hang on. Um, we've been helping or working with Douglas Fastnet to try to expand access to fiber internet broadband. Um, and there have been lots of uh, both federal and state level investments in broadband access. Um, and one thing we will have to, uh, or we will start seeing more of, I hope, is the inclusion of uh, broadband access. is the inclusion of uh broadband access specifically for commercial and industrial properties. Um F Street is just one of many properties that we hope to collaborate with them and maybe it's just a matter of notification and timing of developments, when they know folks are opening the ground to install something like a water line or a sewer line, that they're able to also install a conduit uh for their uh fiber access, or even more creative, uh Jim Piper and I had a meeting with them today to talk about utilization of old water lines. So as we replace and and upsize our water services in public rights of way, um ba- uh broadband providers are able or could be able to utilize those now un- unutilized water lines for additional connection services. Which could be a great kind of confluence, something that that um isn't a totally new idea, in fact, uh the way that the city of Eugene was able to market their downtown gigabit access for the n- new business development and the idea of retaining larger employers that have um you know, internet-based employment or or services was to utilize their old, the old steam tunnels that were built by E-Web back in the early twentieth century uh to provide heating access to those buildings um are now being utilized as, albeit very large, uh conduits for broadband service. So it's just another way of thinking about how we can use existing resources to add value um to to places and development within our community.
Does that, Maddie, does that help F Street, um they're they're wanting, one of the ideas was to move F Street across to the east, cross the tracks and around and back. Is that gonna help give it a little, maybe a step up as gee, that's the way we wanna go?
It it certainly could, David, it it would be consistent with that vision. Um and I guess the next item on my report, which moves very seamlessly, it's like a a a really great collaborative storytelling. Uh the city is in in the process of um uh developing an agreement with the owners of the former Super Eight Motel uh to acquire a right of way from their driveway access on Oregon Avenue South uh to the old mill site. So that alignment that you've seen drawn on several transportation planning maps uh is something that we believe is an integral connection for uh that that old mill site to be marketable to a new developer, uh and we're very optimistic about our our ability to uh work with the applicants for the three forty-five East Oregon development. Um they, I believe their application back in September was called the Crestwell Butte Apartments, uh but I'm not sure if that name will stick. So we're in, we're in the process of of acquiring that um with some negotiation, uh let's see. There is a a, there are a couple of new houses uh that we've seen come in in the last few weeks, we expect this springtime to be a very busy building season. Um you've got some lots on Owen's Way that are opening up for development and purchase, there are some houses that are still yet to be constructed on Hillgas, that extension that uh Nathan Marple did about two years ago. Um and I think the big ticket item is is that we city have been working with the Department of Land Conservation and Development over the last few months, and it's picked up quite a bit in the last month or so, uh to develop a strategy towards providing a a scope of work and a a a request for proposals level, uh requests to do an urban growth boundary amendment, and that's taken a little bit more time than I had hoped, but I guess as a consolation prize, DLCD has offered uh some technical assistance funding to move that project forward. So we will be uh exploring a concept called sequential urban growth boundary amendment. Um sequential meaning that we take the each of the goal areas in pieces and have uh folks at the state level acknowledge those pieces in an effort to mitigate what sometimes is a barrier to cities being successful in uh making an amendment to their growth boundary and or the appeals that sometimes come in at the eleventh hour on those projects, um for example, just to, as a regional example and and pardon my conversation about a a neighboring community to one of our commissioners who plays two roles, but Coberg recently did an amendment to their urban growth boundary uh in twenty, I believe it was like twenty eighteen or nineteen, it was pretty recently. Um but that amendment process was in the works for nearly, I I believe, since twenty-ten or eleven. Um so it took a very, very long time for them to move through that, and then it included in that process was a a remand, a legal challenge to the amendment, and the legal challenge from my understanding was a person whose property may have been eligible for inclusion in the selection process, but wasn't chosen by the city. And they they wanted, they wanted to be part of the city so badly that they uh appealed the uh the decision and took it to court. Uh so our hope is that we'll do a robust, uh we'll make a robust effort of of assessing feasibility of servicing certain areas of the community and uh making a really kind of airtight uh case for our requests to expand. And that made, that will bring in all of the uh, all the skeletons and all the dirty laundry, um including some of the challenges we've had with, say, the East Side wastewater facility in their re-permitting process and the ability for us to expect re- uh inclusion or annexation of land that's not in the city right now from the east side. Uh it'll also talk about uh our service capacity um for our own wastewater system and the feasibility of extending water and wastewater service into areas that are eligible for inclusion, um some of which may require crossing farmland to get to uh areas that are eligible, and that's a very complicated process that we will talk through and parse out as it comes forward, um but there are some there are some some creative solutions and some big ideas that are being uh entertained by our friends at the state, and I'm very optimistic about it. So I I wanna make sure that you're all appraised to that, I will be going to um I'll bring some, a summary of some of that work, just an overview of the UGB amendment process and some of the steps that we'll take, uh I'll bring that to you in April, uh at our next meeting. To for more discussion.
Maddie, how many, how many acres or how much do we need?
That's a great question, uh we have right now uh some amended numbers that I'm happy to share with you, I'll I'll get them prepared for our next meeting. Uh I don't have them at my fingertips, but know that there is a deficit definitely on the residential side. Uh on the commercial side, it's largely, uh it's it's a little bit uh less certain because we haven't finished our economic opportunities analysis yet. That's something that's waiting in the wings that will be getting started likely in the month of April as well, so it's gonna be a big spring kinda kickoff of a number of projects. Um but there uh, there are some changes to the numbers you saw in the housing needs analysis because of those new floodplain maps. So some of the land that was previously counted as developable land will be removed because it's uh constrained by flood risk.
So were those, those maps were finally authenticated or accepted, or?
No, not yet, my face is blue. Uh no, in fact, um just a quick up uh update on the on the flood maps, um the Mackenzie area is, has been removed from the flood map update because of the impact of wildfires in that area, um there are a variety of reasons, one is that when places burn, uh the sometimes the flooding risks change. Um and that's a pretty significant challenge that FEMA and others will have to grapple with as as far as remapping goes. And then secondly, uh I think politically, there was a very strong headwind um towards the remapping effort as yet another barrier to folks having access to reconstruction. So there's, there's a a lot wrapped up in that, and uh my hope is that uh they, they FEMA and and the county kinda sort that out. Um until then, it's important that the rest of the Willamette Basin go through the remapping process and, you know, get get new flood maps, uh effective maps, uh kind of solidified and moved forward because our our development and growth capacity depend on it.
Okay.
Aside from that, I'm I'm drawing a blank on what else, but I did hear a rumor, there was like a a little bit of a lull, sh- is there a, is there going to be a car wash, is there not gonna be a car wash at the seventy-six station, and so I hear there's been a raffled golden ticket uh that someone has won the first car wash. So I believe that Bill is on the hook. And he's gonna build that car wash. So that makes me very happy, and I I think you'll find that I got a a very nerdy quote in the in the Crestwell Chronicle this week.
I've talked to him recently and he is like, he's trying to get that building ripped down like as fast as humanly possible. I think he said he's sent in uh somewhere, or i- it was, last I had spoke with him, he had sent in twelve uh samples from the building to get tested for uh, yeah.
Asbestos, yeah.
Asbestos, and he's like, I just wanna take the bill, just wanna rip it down. So it it sounds like the removal process is almost just as fun as the uh building process, so good for him, I guess, I'm excited though, it's gonna be awesome to see that.
I agree.
Alright, uh well, so uh next meeting, uh Thursday, April fifteenth, it looks like we definitely have stuff online for that, so pretty exciting moving forward, and if anyone can't make it, um let Maddie or I know, um and we can get that figured out, so, yeah, thank you guys for your time, it feel, I feel like there was a lot of just functional issues tonight, but we made it through live, so it's good.
Nice work, everyone.
Yeah, meeting adjourned, six oh six.
Okay, Tammy, go get that shot.
Yes.
Thank you.
I gotta wait, I gotta wait two weeks.
Oh.
For number two.
Good, David, good, that's great news.
Gotta get us all folks safe.
That's right, keep everyone safe.
Yep.
Alright, everyone, thanks for your time tonight, and uh if you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to uh let me know.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.